In order to join me and recite the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our June Board of Supervisors meeting. Ken, please note that all three supervisors are present. With that being said, we'll move into public comment on agenda items. Are there any public comment on any of the agenda items listed here tonight before we vote on them? All right, hearing none. Secretary Judge report. Any issues with last minutes, with last month's?
There was, it was a small one, just that my name was spelled wrong in one spot, but two i's somehow, which is a, that was a new misspelling, but other than that, it looked good. Other than that, it was good.
All right, perfect. We'll move on to Treasury report.
Right, for pre-audit, the general fund investments, escrows and liabilities, eight million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-five cents. The highway eight fund, one million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and thirteen cents. Capital reserve fund, two million, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, two million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, two thirty-nine, ten. Vow for audit.
Perfect. We'll vow our for audit. Monthly bills.
General fund paid, three hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and fifteen cents, for a total paid of three hundred, three hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and fifteen cents, correcting the paid amount. Escrow fund, two thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, for a total paid of two thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. State highway fund paid, five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents, for a total paid of five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Capital reserve fund paid, thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty cents, for a total paid of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty cents. Total bills paid, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and nineteen cents. There were no unpaid bills in either category. I make a motion, pay the bills.
We get a motion. Second.
Second. All right, all those who are seeking approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll move on to reports. Lafayette Fire Company on the east side, May twenty twenty-five, they had six calls for service in Lancaster Township. Lancaster Township Fire Department west side, May twenty twenty-five, thirty-nine calls, and Lancaster Township, one hundred and ninety-two calls year-to-date. Township Fire Department.
Probably not the yesterday report. We did, we had our community day, it was well-attended by the community. We like to see the numbers maybe increase for next year, but all in all, it was pretty decent. We did have a small fire on Spring House Road last Sunday, relatively contained. The house did take significant smoke and heat damage, but all in all, the structure itself is in pretty good shape. It was actually caused by rags. It was a fortunately, the house was vacant, it was under renovation, and the homeowners had discarded rags that contained oil into the bathtub, and they spontaneously combusted. So, passed for by, no smoke coming from the house. We were there pretty quick and able to contain it.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Recycling report, May twenty twenty-five, twenty-two point sixty-two percent of the project was recycled. Safety committee minutes, April seventeen twenty-five, and SIR reports. Printed copies of all reports are available at the township website. For a nominal fee, it can be viewed in print from the website for free. We'll now move on into work sharp reports. First up, planning and zoning, Mr. John.
Good morning. It's been busy. It seems like permits are really active lately, so we've been, I don't know that it's necessarily more than other years, but it seems like we've been really keeping busy the last few weeks with permits. Grass, although since I reported last month, grass is still a problem of being long, not being cut. It has improved since last month, too, so we're, we're getting there slowly but surely. And then lastly, I'd like to draw your attention on a couple of items on the agenda for planning and zoning. One in particular, the item B, LTPC one eighty-seven regarding Hawthorne Ridge. We're going to ask that based on some new information, that you do not act on that tonight. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Up next, township engineer, Mr. Weber.
Thank you. Good evening. The construction season is very much upon us, so we have three substantial new projects that are underway. Millensville Apartments on seven forty-one, then also Southern Village Phase Four along Wabank Road, and then of course, Wabank Road Self-Storage at the corner of Wabank Road and Bean Hill Road. So, different things pop up with those various projects at different times, but they're all getting underway. Continuing underway is the Burroughs Elementary School Project. They're doing some curb work along Rank Avenue and Rank Mill Road, so I'm grateful for the patience of the traveling public on those roads because it does get a little tight with traffic cones out into the cartway somewhere. So, just trying to keep those projects moving and getting things done in the, in the correct order. Don't really have anything more to add.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions? Public Works, Mr. Graff.
Yes. Good evening. A few items to talk about. One, continuing conversations with Glow Fiber and Comcast representatives, working through some confusion on their end, railway ordinance, and planning some projects that they're, larger, larger share projects that they're trying to get down here in the township. We did hire, fill the full-time position in the Public Works Department, hired Dylan Emler, young kid, family-oriented guy, so I'm really excited to have him on board. Few items to note, everyone at this point is well aware that the seven forty-one bridge is shutting down tomorrow. I did hear from the representative, third party, PNDAP engineer hire, they had some concerns about another detour in the area. We rectified that today. He did let me know that they do plan to start work, work from five AM to five PM, six days a week, starting tomorrow. So, there will be excessive noise. Spoke to John about that today. So, we worked through all that here with the intent to be done per the plan before August twenty-second, when school starts up. That's why they're rushing to do work six days a week over there. And in addition to that, the county had sped up the project for the schoolhouse road bridge, so that that would be speed completed. The road is back open as well, so unless you guys have any other questions, that's all I have for the report on this.
Nope. Any questions, Jim?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Next up, yeah, Public Works Facility Construction Project report from Mr. Mike Hamel.
Okay, so, you got my report. We're looking for direction in consideration of a new Public Works facility. Right now, the building estimate is about five point nine million dollars, and we're going to need about two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to get to the bid stage. That will take us through bid award, development of the construction documents. We already have the geotechnical study underway. So, enclosed in your report was a drawing, a design drawing, which we've had two meetings with Buchard Horn to get to that point, and then also the land survey. So, and there is a schedule attached. If we start in the next month or so, we're looking for this to complete in May of twenty twenty-seven. So, at this point, we're asking for direction as to, to be able to proceed to prepare the construction documents and so forth, based on what we find in the geotechnical study. Any questions?
No, we've had other discussions here about, about this, and it's been an ongoing issue.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so, we have money set aside in the capital fund for facility improvements. I think we have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there, in there now. So, that would exhaust the, the design and, and correct me if I misspeak here, but the design and bid specs preparation, and then putting the document out for bid would exhaust almost the entirety of that fund. But there's no way to move forward with the project until we get to that spot to really know, with the volatility of the construction market and materials, we don't really know what the building's going to cost. So, we did confirm with Buchard Horn that provided, that we continue to use them. Those plans that they develop, we take ownership of, and we can use those either if we, if we continue to use Buchard Horn, we could use those plans. Let's say we just, let's say the bids come in at like seven million dollars, and we just can't build the building, and it's unreasonable. Then we can retain those, those designs for a future bid or a future construction, and if we don't use them, we can at least use those as a foundation with whatever engineering firm that we would engage with. So, I, I think this is money well spent in the pursuit of the building, but it's, as far as, as far as I think we're concerned, it's no commitment to the ongoing process. It's, it's an investment to see kind of where we, where we stand and what we can afford and what we're going to do.
I would also add just that we also, out of that three fifty or the two seventy-three that, that I mentioned, we're going to do about, we'll do about twenty-five to thirty-thousand dollars worth of improvements to the lower building so that we can, right now, that doesn't have heat, and there are a couple other amenities we have to add so the guys can, we can convert that to usable space for ongoing operations.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, Police Chief Gatz.
So, for May of twenty twenty-five, we have four hundred and sixty-seven calls for service. All these numbers have been pretty much in line each month so far this year on average. Thirty crashes, no fatal crashes. A hundred and seventy-six traffic citations were issued, twenty-seven written traffic warnings, fourteen misdemeanor felony arrests, five DUI arrests, twenty-two non-traffic citations, which are summary criminal. A little spike in there, we had a bunch of retail thefts at the lice markets during May, and no overdose incidents and fatalities. You can see below the year-to-date totals. We did have one member resign in May, mainly personal reasons, and we're currently looking for a replacement right now, so that's all I have. Any question?
I think following your Instagram posts, one or two maybe. Everyone should follow it, you'll know what's going on in the township.
Crime line, of course.
Yep.
Do you pass along our thanks to the officers? They're doing a great job, we're very thankful for that. We understand the job can be tough, especially when you're in a new community, but we're all very thankful for the great job that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Great. Township manager, Mr. Duddy.
Only thing I have for you is there's two proposed dates for the township's volunteer appreciation dinner, the September twenty-fifth or October sixteenth. If you could let me know, tonight or as soon as you can, with which of those dates works for you, and if neither of those dates work, please provide an alternative date so we can get that scheduled.
All right, sounds good. Any questions?
Nope.
All right. All right, announcements. Tuesday, June seventeenth, at seven PM is the planning commission, commission meeting here at twelve forty Maple Ave. Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, at seven PM is the zoning hearing board meeting here at twelve forty Maple Ave. Friday, July fourth, twenty twenty-five, Independence Day, the township office is closed. Monday, July fourteenth, at six PM is our next Board of Supervisors meeting at twelve forty Maple Ave, right here, at twelve forty Maple Ave. All business, there's none. We're now going to move into planning and zoning.
LTPC three fifteen, fifteen fifteen Ridge Road Field Change Request. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a request for James Boyer, David Miller and Associates, that the existing concrete retaining wall on Lot One be allowed to remain in place, and that the Boulder retaining wall construction on Lot Two be allowed to remain in place at its construction location. The request was received in a letter dated March fourth, twenty twenty-five. In his letter dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, Township Engineer Benton Weber recommended approval of field change request. The Township Planning Commission recommended approval.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, LTPC one eight seven Hawthorne Ridge Financial Security Reduction. I'd make a motion that we approve.
We're not acting on this.
Oh, that's why we're not acting. Sorry. We'll move to the next one. LTPC three two three, fifteen nineteen Ridge Road Financial Security Reduction. I'd make a motion that we approve the financial security reduction requested by Steve Gerberly, Harbor Engineering, for a complete release of financial security of fifteen nineteen Ridge Road. Our engineer, Ben, I was just going to mention that our engineer, Ben Weber, recommended that we approve this.
Second. All right, motion in the second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 LTPC three thirty-two, eighty Jackson Drive Demolition Permit. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a request from David Costello, Costello Builders, for the demolition of a historic resource, single-family dwelling built in the late nineteen forties located at Action, or at eighty Jackson Drive. The request was submitted April seventh, twenty twenty-five at their meeting, June second, twenty twenty-five, at Lancaster Township. Historical Commission recommended approval of the subject demolition permit application with the condition that the building plans will be reviewed by the Historical Commission.
Second.
Motion in the second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, new business. The proposed amendments to the township schedule fees.
Can I make a motion, do we approve the amendments?
Second.
Motion in the second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Guest recognition and participation. If anybody has any public comment on anything, we ask that you please state your name and address, and please come up here to the podium. Going once, going twice.
Hi, my name is Jody Glauk, and I live at sixty-two Spencer Avenue. And I'm here as a representative of the Emerald Park Treaty Committee, and I just want to say thank you very much for, we just received an email, a note by us of, of a new page on the website that collects all the information about tree policy and so forth, and it looks good. Glad to see that. And that the, I think that's an outcome of the, of the task force, Ad Hoc Tree Task Force, that was convened by Mr. Bamford, and were, there were presentations by Mr. Graff. So, and also delighted to see that the permitting process seems to be streamlined so that there is no longer need for an actual tree permit application. It's just a R and W permit application if indeed planting looks like it's going to occur in the R and W. So, I just want to say thank you. I also want to say thank you very much for, we partnered with Public Works to donate some trees, and the planting down there in Maple Grove Park, three maples and one oak tree, looks great. Nicely done. Thank you so much for doing that.
Jody, thank you for participating in the committee.
We're not, we're not done making trouble, but yeah.
No, it's good. I wanted to note, about quarter of six, I got an email from Paul Tebow. He's going to be providing his comments in the coming weeks, he says. So, there may be some modifications to information that we have, but.
There's always more feedback, right?
Certainly, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah.
Time once.
My name is Allison Kibler. I live at one oh seven Atkins Avenue. I just want to talk about, just to keep everybody a little up to date, I'm not going to talk about trees right away, but does anyone else have any experience with what's going on with like recycling and woody waste pickup? Because just by chance, I've been awake for the past two pickups, once recycling and once woody waste, and each time, it went into the garbage. And that seemed like an odd coincidence. Like, did we get charged for the second truck coming through the neighborhood, and it just, or are we not paying for it, and so we're still all putting our stuff out? It seemed strange to me that that happened.
Did you have any sense of, of the timing of that?
Like a month ago, three weeks ago. Like, it was in a row, it was consecutive pickups.
Okay.
Because obviously, like, the, the bags of yard waste aren't out every week. So, it was like, one week was the yard waste, just went into garbage, and then the next week, the recycling went into the garbage.
Yard waste would have been the first week in June?
Yeah.
Or two weeks prior.
So, each time, I emailed the person who the contact is, and she like very kindly got back to me. But I just wanted to like make it a more like collective concern that it seems like you might have been charged for something that didn't happen, which feels wrong.
That's wrong, yeah.
Yeah, if that, if those second trucks didn't come. And then I would, just to continue the tree conversation, like right with appreciation for the Ad Hoc Committee and convening that group, like I hope that we will continue to consider things like a tree inventory, a tree commission, and like ways that we can encourage people to plant. You know, could we offer discount trees? Could we offer help with planting? Could we, other municipalities and townships like help people dig out stumps? So, there's a wide array of things that we could do that would be more proactive, and isn't really like arguing about whether or not we should be able to plant in the row. I have feelings about that, too, but others than that, like there's a lot more we could do to encourage people to plant. One of, must be one of the oldest trees in the neighborhood between Atkins and the Wheatland Field. What was it, is it an oak or is it an oak tree? Just massive. That recently came down. Like, it should have. I'm not, you know, it's just, we're going to keep losing those trees of that vintage, and it would be great if we could, in a more systematic way, get young trees planted that will bring that kind of beauty and health to the neighborhood. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
We had a couple of different discussions during the committee section. I don't know, Jody, if you remember.
Sorry.
One that we, we had talked about, how do we encourage people to plant trees? And one of the things we, we do is, you know, maybe put something in, somebody who just moved to the township, they get a welcome packet from us, and in there, they would find information on how to plant trees, and what to do, and all that kind of stuff. So, we had a couple of good ideas.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Also, for the, when we know that a tree's coming down, to do some outreach with the, not only the residents that had the tree come down, but with the, with the properties immediately surrounding, that that void could be filled either by the folks who had a tree removed, or one of the neighbors.
Yeah.
So, we're working on, we're working on that.
That, that particular tree or trees you're talking about in that area, we have actually been, I've actually been speaking with Manor House Apartments, and also the property owner, they've all submitted permits, so we'll be continuing to have this conversation.
The person that had the giant tree in the backyard?
Yep.
Wow, that's great. Wow, that's great.
All right, any further, public?
Yeah, hi, I saved myself a few steps and came up early, Dennis Deslave, one oh seven Atkins Avenue, and I, Allison mentioned the tree survey or canopy survey, I remember last year when I talked to Vinnie Katron, he sent me an article he had written for the Journal of Agricultural Studies, and in that article, he said, really, that's sort of the first step, you got to know what trees you have, know where they are, you know, get the sense of the variety, and so my question is, is there any plan to do a tree canopy survey? Thank you.
We can push.
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment, but we can, sure, down, down the road, yeah.
He mentioned that when he came to one of our meetings, also for the committee, which was great, we had other members in public come, and he was, he was really enthusiastic about trees, that's for sure.
All right, thank you. Any further or other comments from the general public? Going once, going twice, and.